I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give them a moment of silence, please. Roll call, Trudy, way out there.
Councilor Chamberlain?
President.
Councilor Schneider?
Rick here.
Councilor Stickle?
Here.
Councilor Jeff Steers?
Here.
Councilor Graves?
Here.
Councilor Scott Steers?
Here.
I'm sure you got a cookie in that.
Everyone present?
Oh, everyone's present.
Okay. Councilors had time to approve all the prior meeting minutes. Can we have a motion to move on these minutes?
I would make that a motion.
I will second it.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes by Councilor Schneider Stickle and seconded by Councilor Graves. All in favor?
Aye.
If our motion carries.
All right. We have no one wishing to visit our council chambers today and speak to council, so we are going to move forward with our committee reports. And we had a trade commission meeting.
Yes. So the biggest thing we talked about again was being prepared for the Arbor Day next year, as R.C. will host it. And the plan was to go to Bowling Green to visit that, but that has now been postponed to be determined. We don't know when yet. And the plaques were ordered for Walton, Langton, Kim Bowles for their past service.
Service?
Service, yes. Thank you. And that's it.
Okay. So more or less the meeting was, or the banquet was moved to be announced.
Yes.
The ordering of the plaques and things like that, more or less, is coming out of just the general budget. I'm assuming it's not that much, so.
It was, what are they, $65 each, I believe.
Okay. So we will need a motion from council to approve that. They're going to get that for Kim and Walt on these minutes.
I would make a motion now.
I'll second it.
Councilor Steers made a motion with Councilor Scott Steers seconding to approve the $65 for the plaque. Is that what we're doing, or is it for the whole trade commission?
Plaque.
For the plaques.
65 each, right? There'll be two plaques at 65 each.
65 each for two plaques. Is there any further discussion? Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Stickle?
Yes.
Councilor Jeff Steers?
Yes.
Councilor Graves?
Yes.
And Councilor Scott Steers?
Yeah.
Six oh motion carries. And due to the six feet separation brought down by our mandates from the state, I apologize for the spreading out of the room, but I appreciate the fact that we have the space to be able to do this, to hold our meeting today. So we are going to have our department head reports. It's just going to be in an echo effect here, and we'll start with our department head, fire chief, Rick Slidewich, I want to appreciate for all of the information you've been bringing forward to our city with all the updates and mandates and everything from every aspect of emergency information that you have, so.
What I've provided you tonight is kind of an explanation of what we're doing here with this paperwork against COVID-19. Did you get one, Tom?
I got one.
So anyhow, this has got an explanation on it as far as the incident command situation. Basically, where this comes into play is ever since 9/11, multiple years ago, anytime we operate within the framework of a national incident, we're required to operate in our National Incident Command System. And where this becomes important is as a federal emergency, state emergency has been declared, when it comes time to ask for reimbursement for expenditures for this, this becomes important, and we have a lot of this documented. So what I gave you there was the layout of this incident command. And don't be distracted by the word incident, because we think of incident as a day, a day or a one-time thing. Well, this incident's going to be a long drawn out. It has what we call many operational periods to it. So that just explains how we've got to divide it up and who's responsible for what. So that just lets you know who's going to be where. The next page is the Incident Command System and how it's relayed out and how it's developed. So if you have questions about definitions and what those positions mean. And then I included an ICS 202 form, which is our incident objectives. And that's going to explain how, what our primary objectives are over the next several weeks and months, as far as the safety and protection for everything going on in Wausau. And those objectives are going to, that objective will remain the same. The tactical operations and what we conduct and what we have to do between the police and fire departments will change accordingly. And then there's an organizational assignment list that gives the different people that have been assigned a different, different position within our Incident Command System from all the different branches of the city of Wausau government. And this is also important for when we communicate and cooperate with our surrounding people, whether it be law enforcement, other fire departments, even state agencies. This indicates who they contact. If they need to call here, they don't just call here looking for the fire chief, they call here looking for the logistics or the liaison person so they can intercommunicate. So this is just a documentation of how duties are divided up within the city until the emergency is declared over with. And then we meet on a daily basis, once a day or more if needed, to readjust this organizational plan. And obviously, if something happens to one of the leaders of each group, the other can fill in or somebody else can be appointed, and that changes from operational period to operational period. But each of our department heads and our shift supervisors have logs to keep. Any, all the mileage you put on vehicles, expenditures, we get, we got a log on that. And then at the end of this situation, the federal government says, now we've got a new person open, turn in your paperwork. And it's just like a big insurance policy. They send somebody from FEMA out to evaluate our situation, and we go from there. And then we'll continue to do what we always do. This just sort of explains how we've got the organization laid out so everybody's aware that we've got all the branches covered. And then, so now it's just a matter of executing as situation brings itself about, so.
The one thing I've noticed, just since this has started in the last couple days, we have utilized personnel for certain things, just in the ordering of supplies, because like you've all noticed, on the outside, just in the stores, how supplies have gone down so quickly and sorts of things. That's not only just happened in your own lives, it's also happened here in the workplace and in emergency services. And it's just amazing how everything just stops and trying to get supplies in and trying to get, just a simple thing as gloves, cleaning supplies, and everything is just all of a sudden very difficult. So when, you know, we rely on our personnel to try to order that, and we're calling, I don't know, Phil gave us a list that I couldn't even read because the font was like this big, and I don't know how many were on that list of suppliers to try to get cleaning supplies into this building. It was just amazing. And I think one supplier said that you, we can get you wipes in June. In June, I was like, are you kidding? So it's just amazing how everything just topsy-turvy, turboils when you go into a situation like this. So it's definitely hit our building and not just us, but everybody. And emergency and first responders are definitely the high risk when it comes to this operating and also for the virus itself. So I thank Rick for all of this information. At first I looked at it, said I use serious, but now it makes so much sense. So thank you for that. And let's see, Chief Chittenden.
We've been working with the, with the department heads and everything on this, our response to this virus as well. I did give the council a copy of my special orders, if anybody could read through that. Basically, just listing out that we have to make some changes in the way we respond on a day-to-day type of operation. But the main thing I do want to stress is we, we'll obviously will still be responding to all emergencies as we normally would. Now, the non-emergence calls, different things like that, we're taking a few different precautions to try to limit our exposure as far as being able to take those calls over the phone or having them come up in person into the lobby but not enter into our building. Different things like that are all outlined in those, in that report there. The second thing I did was let mayor and council know, our part-time officer Chad Randall has submitted his resignation as of March 21st. Chad's been with us just short of two years, but he's got a full-time position with the Hancock County Sheriff's Office. So I did want to thank Chad for his service at time and wish him well on his next endeavors.
I guess I didn't ask council if they had any questions for either Chief Slidewich or Chief Chittenden.
I got a quick question for Chief. Hey, crossing guards, does the school pay them or does the city?
No, the city pays them.
The city pays them. I had one come in and ask me last Friday about what am I going to do? I said, well, watch and see. I think they said, you know, there's no waiting wait for.
I think they can file for, for unemployment, and I think they waived the one-time.
One, there's no waiting.
One-week waiting, and all that type of stuff.
They did that, and then, so.
Yeah, I did, I did see that, yeah, with crossing guards. But that is paid, paid out of the police department budget.
Thank you.
How many hours a week is that?
The average, I want to say is like 11 and 1/4 hours.
Sorry.
So 20, 22 and 1/2, I think, is their, their normal period, assuming it was all five days of school for both weeks.
So do they get unemployment during the summer, or probably not, either?
I don't know of any that have ever filed for it during the summer.
Probably a seasonal job.
I think it would be considered a seasonal.
Can you have questions? All right. Keith Torvit is not here right now. He is in Vegas, pouting, I'm sure, because everything is shut down. Jamie also flew out to Vegas and is in Arizona right now, I think. So that moves us to Tom.
So first thing this morning, myself, met with the mayor and the other department heads that were present, Rick and Kevin, and then also we had Trudy involved, then Sarah was here, and then John Arps as well joined our meeting, and then Shane participated for a while by telephone. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss various things the city should consider doing in terms of its inner workings and its interfacing with the public. Can let the mayor speak to some of those. I would just point out that we did spend a fair amount of time on trying to come up with a, a policy regarding how to treat employees who have traveled a certain distance and there may be some concerns about bringing them back into the workforce. I think we're going to talk about that in new business. Sarah's put together a policy which we reviewed and are going to present to council for its approval on our new business. And then I'd also suggest on our new business, if council's inclined to discuss its thoughts on conducting, whether to conduct future meetings and committee meetings, and if so, how we can go about doing that and still comply with the open meetings requirement. I was involved in a telephone conference with the attorney general and other municipal law directors just before the meeting, and there's like an update, council, on that when we get to that issue.
Okay, under your business.
That was a helpful conversation. But anyway, so those two things, at least from my perspective, to be discussed of new business, the policy, and also what council's thoughts are on conducting future meetings and committee meetings.
Good.
I think that's it. Fair enough. I'm thrilled for everybody, it's a fast-moving day with all the information coming out.
It's continually moving and changing, too. That's worse. Thank you. Any questions for Tom? I'm sure we'll dive into this more under your business.
Sure.
There's a lot of questions.
Yep.
Okay. We have nothing under first reading, so we'll move into second reading. Orders 2020-3 to amend section 933.02 water rate schedule effective June 1 of 2020.
Second reading.
Council President Chamberlain made a motion with Councilor Jeff Steers seconding to place orders 2020-3 on second reading. Any discussion? Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Stickle?
Yes.
Council Jeff Steers?
Yes.
Council Graves?
Yes.
And Councilor Scott, Scott Steers?
Yes.
Six oh motion carries.
We have nothing under third reading of legislation, so we will move on to new business. This kind of got stopped on today, with all the other stuff. So you all have your 2019 year-end report, which I think 2020, I can already tell you what the first paragraph's going to be for next year. But read it at your leisure. You can see that we have a new public service director that took over for Dennis Richardson after 25 years of service, Keith Torvit, who's not here right now, and Kevin Chittenden, who took over for Keith's job. And then as a new police chief, and then John Rup, who took over for Kevin's job as the assistant chief. This all happened in 2019. One of the big things, there was a decrease in the number of calls in our police department. Let's see, the major crimes went down 2%, and minor crimes were down about 9%. The finance department, I think everybody was aware about our income tax revenue for 2019 was kind of a downer on that. And let's see, we, the zoning department issued 14 zoning permits for, and zoning permits for 24 new residential housing units constructed in 2019. I think that was, that's pretty good for 2019. And of course, the Wausau Fire Department responded to 1,877 emergency medical services in 2019, and approximately 300 less calls for services than the previous year for our transport because of it being down, needing some work. How long was that down again?
About a month of mechanical, and then some of it's just been.
Right. And again, I would like to thank all of my city council department heads and all the city employees. And city council, again, for everything that they do for the city. 2019 was a good year. It was a year of change with all of our changes in our department heads and departments. So this year, it's margin, look at what we're doing already, we're spreading out. So read your, this at your leisure, always say when you have nothing to do, but right now we're busy. So we're going to move on to this morning's meeting and some of the things that we came up with. And since this morning, we've had more change with our, our meetings. And what used to be 50 is now down to 10.
I haven't seen that.
I think that came out across, too, as suggested. Okay, the first thing I want to bring forward to council is, one of the things we talked about, the six feet, being a part to try to keep our employees' safety, our health safety and welfare of our employees is very important to us, and it is adamant that we try to do whatever we can do. So the first thing I want to say is that the city locked the doors at what time out front in our administration building?
About 10:00.
About 10:00 this morning. And it does not mean we kind of confused our public right away because we said that we were closed, the building. We locked the building, we are not closed. We're still functioning by phone and by email. And if somebody does need to talk to us, we do, this is where the money that we put into those windows downstairs are going to be beneficial for our employees, that we can, if they need to come in and discuss something with one of our employees, we do have the window that they can converse back and forth or pay a fine downstairs with our dispatcher or something in that matter. But we do deadlock the front door. We have a drop box that they can pay their water bills, so they can drop their tax pay forms off or anything of that matter. If they do need to talk to a department, we've given the numbers to each department on the window that they can call. So there's options that they can use, and from what I'm understanding, this is what a lot of the other entities are starting to do in villages, just to protect the employers that work in the city. But it is still operating, we are still operating, we just are shutting the, are locking the door downstairs. So that was the first big decision that we made. Just, do you have anything to add to that and administration at all?
Just, you might add, we got to split with the Public Works, you're helping us out up here?
Right, that's what I was going to go to next.
Okay.
The council has in front of them a handwritten form from John. Keith is not here, so John came up in his place. The one thing I thought about is our Public Works Department, the Street Department, many of their employees are usually in the trucks together, two, three at a time, going to and from their sites. And that is the one thing that I thought of, and they work close together. So the one thing we thought of is to divide their shifts a little bit and try, I mean, thank goodness for daylight savings, it gives us an extra hour. And he thought that he could divide them because their break room, everything, they're tight, I mean, they're together. So he thought if we could, you know, think of ways that they could divide their shift and give them work to do out there that they could, even though they're in the elements, it's, it's better, but there are means of, they don't all have a truck to drive back and forth to their, to their sites, and this would help that. And now if we have an emergency and someone's blowing water, you know, you're going to need that crew. So he's going to have to, you know, put them on shifts accordingly to where we have, you know, a backhoe driver and, and digger and whatever on each shift, but I think it'll work. We've done it in the past before, and I think that'll work. So he was willing to do that just for the safety of his men. And also, the one thing we also talked about is everybody's going to be diligent on cleaning their buildings, each building, to make sure that it all works, so for the safety of their health in all the buildings. Hopefully, we can get our supplies to do that, so.
He's also got, you might mention, too, he's got him, he's got the employees that still hold operator licenses, training, making sure.
Yes, that's true. Thank you for that one. He has, in this, in the Street Department, that hold licensers out at the other departments, the water distribution and the sanitary, that if one of them goes down and does get sick, that they're capable of working, which is something that actually Jamie was trying to put in place in her office the same way. If we can utilize our employees to do more work, telecommunicating at home and using their computers and doing work from home, that's something that, you know, we would like to try to see and pay them for working at home. But with keeping the doors closed, that is going to keep the public from coming in, but it's still, you know, it's just trying to keep them safe, and see what we can do. Some of our employees are very capable of doing it, some of them, their job just doesn't allow them to work from home. Public Works is one of them. So, okay. Next, you have any questions about that? Want to talk to us before? Next, after that, our employees who have, I'm going to go to employees who have vacation and then come back. We have about five of them right now that have done this. And Sarah, I think I'm just going to let you talk a little bit about this. And we've gone back and forth, and this is what was discussed this morning on how we deal with this. I guess, before I even start, Governor Dewine has this, the, an executive order, 2020-01D, was declaring a state of emergency, and this is the COVID-19. And more or less, it states, you know, what we need to do as a state of emergency for the whole state of Ohio, and what we need to do to try to keep this contained. And in our code, we also have an emergency where we can go into a proclamation which we can add this, to where we can follow, to where whenever this is changing, instead of legislate every rule of change, there's no way we can change. I mean, they're changing the rules daily, curfews. I, I'm hearing that curfews are coming down the pike in different states and what you can and can't do. I'm thinking just parking downtown, our restaurants who are now going to carry out, we should allow our, our parking downtown for those carryouts so that these restaurants can continue to thrive and people can park down there. And, I mean, if we've had to change each legislation to go towards what they're mandating, I, we would, we might as well just, you know, get our sleeping bags and stay up here because everything's going to have to be under an emergency change. So I really feel that we should go into an emergency proclamation to where we can follow the mandates of our state and what they're bringing forward. So that is something that I want to bring forward, but right now I'd like Sarah to talk to you a little bit about things we discussed today and what we are bringing forward as our employee travel policy and procedure, and that we also look into going into our emergency proclamation, which is 509.08, which would follow our mandates that the state is bringing forward to us. Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, so we've been putting together some, some guidelines. We've sent out some emails on, you know, tips to stay healthy in the workplace because protecting our employees is, is one of my main goals. So this policy that we put together today does do that, but we've done things like take the pens out at the front, take the candy dishes out, wash your hands, send out those emails, just tips that they can follow that the Ohio Department of Health has, has given us to use as guidelines. When it comes to employee travel, because this is a big, a big issue, and this is an issue I think every state and city is looking at, in order to slow the spread of the coronavirus and keep a safe workplace, which is, we need to maintain a safe workplace for our employees that are still reporting to work, we have recommended that it's mandatory for employees who have traveled after March 11th across state lines more than 100 miles or to highly infected areas to self-quarantine themselves for at least 14 days. The 14 days is the maximum amount of time that they say now that people who have been exposed to this coronavirus will show symptoms. So that 14-day guideline allows them a chance to quarantine and see if they will have those symptoms coming from that. If they are staying home and they can complete work from home, remote work, then they'll be asked to do that, and we're going to set up a plan with their supervisor to perform that work from home. If work from home can't be completed, which in some cases we have employees that their job just doesn't allow that, then they will be able to use sick time that is approved to come, to cover that. Then the other part of that is, we're asking them to quarantine for 14 days after this travel, either across state lines for over 100 miles or highly infected areas, or until a test can be, a negative test can be provided. So if you've traveled and when tests are readily available, which we hear is. So if you've traveled and when tests are readily available, which we hear is coming down, coming down the pipeline, they can go and take that test after five days. And if it's negative, they're allowed to come back to work at that point. They don't have to quarantine for the whole 14 days at that point. And then again, I put in here, this policy can be amended as needed and as timelines and as resources evolve because information's evolving daily, if not hourly. So this is what we've come up with today. And also, there's, there's legislation that has passed the House, which I shared earlier, that is, and it's supposed to be in the Senate today, but it got held back, of course, that will expand FMLA for a lot more of the workforce. And it also allows for a coronavirus sick, sick leave for people who don't have sick leave, for part-time employees, full-time employees. So that is coming, coming through. It isn't in effect yet, but it's being presented to the Senate soon.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming like if you're just plain old sick for three days, you have to have a doctor's notice?
After three days, correct.
Will they have to do that for the, will they have to have a doctor's notice after they come back from the quarantine? I mean, the 14-day quarantine or just is that way?
If they're, if they're sick, then, then yes, they would have to. But the quarantine, the point of the 14 days is within that 14 days, they should show symptoms if they are positive.
But I mean, they'll be taking sick leave days off, right?
Correct, to cover that.
So if they get sick, then they would, they would get that.
And if they do test positive, this is another thing that FMLA is, coronavirus is going to be considered a serious health condition, which qualifies for FMLA. So under FMLA guidelines, they have to follow that, and a return to work is necessary to come back under that. So there's a few different avenues we can go with this. It's just hard to tell where to come at this point, but this is the best, I think, avenue to keep our employees safe.
So once they get back from vacation, they got to wait five days to take the test, if the test are out there yet, correct?
Once they get back, they need to stay in that 14-day.
Right, but you said unless they take a test.
So yes, correct. If they, if they travel out of state or they travel to a highly infected area, they come back. The tests are readily, they can go through a drive-through or go through one of the camps that they're setting up with tests or here, if that may be the case. They could take the test, and if it's negative, they can come back to work in a day. If they can provide us with a negative test, then they can return to work.
But say you get back and right before, the day you get, the day before you come up with, I mean, do they know how quick this actually shows up on the test? That's my point. I mean.
How quickly it shows up on the test?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I've been watching.
I know the symptoms is they.
I haven't seen anybody say how quick this test will actually pick it up. I mean, if you pick up.
I have not seen any waiting period for, for testing.
The tests are, the tests are available in Lucas County as of today, but, but only under specific guidelines. And so it should only be a matter of a few more days before we've got clear information on that. So it is fluid.
I could, I could see where two consecutive negative tests, maybe separated by 48 or 72 hours, might be, you know.
I'm just saying, I don't think they know yet if you get it this morning.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
You know, if you touch on the floor and get the disease or a urinal, whatever it is, if the test would pick it up that quick. I, you know, I listen to the different doctors, and they haven't really answered that question.
Yeah, because usually, usually you have the symptom, then you get tested. Whereas you're getting tested just to see.
Right.
But according to what they're stating, that you can get tested and if it states you don't, it will show if you're, if you have it or not.
Well, anything that they release and any testing results we use would be under the parameters of Ohio Department of Health. And I think that'd be the important part, to just do that instead of debate the, the testing question because we don't know yet. But I'm sure when the test comes out.
We have to protect ourselves and doing the right thing and having them be tested.
And we can modify this, you know, as needed. When that information does come out and they say you need to wait three days or you can be tested right away, then we'll, we'll make it that way, if reflected here in this policy.
I think it's a good place to start. Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
Okay.
I would think a motion by council to approve the policy if councils are inclined to do that would be the way to handle this.
Yeah, I think that policy needs to be approved first.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
I apologize.
No, go ahead.
I just want to make sure, so it says it is mandatory for employees who have traveled after March 11th across state lines. So more than 100, I'm not trying to be technical.
No, no.
We're in that, we're in that little corner of Ohio.
Well, we talked, that's what, and that's what came up. We talked about it. Is that person going to a Walmart in Adrian or are they traveling extensively outside of the state? And that's why we made.
Some people live outside.
And we do have employees who live in both Indiana and Michigan. So we had to put, the way we kind of looked at, I looked at some, you know, Fort Wayne, Indiana. I went that way, and then we went, we went up to do the 100 miles.
So it's not just state line. It is 100 and state line.
Outside of this.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to accept the COVID-19 employee travel policy and procedure.
Second that motion.
Council President Jingle, make a motion that Council Secretary Sackland to approve the policy and procedure. Any discussion?
Well, are we making this policy under the emergency?
I don't think so.
Are we just making this an emergency policy active today?
I think it's just a policy that, yeah.
Active today, so it needs to be under emergency policy. It's active now.
It's not a resolution or an ordinance, just a motion. So I think it would be effective immediately.
Okay.
So should, I mean, my, my question is, because we're making a motion, shouldn't somebody be in charge of changing that on a daily or hourly basis, Mayor, such as yourself?
Well, that's what we're going to do next. I mean, this is a, it's a procedure. It's a policy and procedure. I just want to make sure that when we come back to, that's what I'm saying. I don't want, every time someone wants to tweak it, that we have to come back to council and next meeting. That's what I'm saying. When the state changes, do we put this under this?
So I guess maybe what you could do to accommodate that would be to give, if you're inclined to do that, to give the administration, the mayor, the authority to revise that on an as-needed basis. Or if you want to have control of revisions to that, then you would want to make it required that are, leave it as is, that the council would have to. But it sounds like if you're interested in providing flexibility to it, I think you could allow, you could include in the motion the ability for the administration to revise that as appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see, I don't know, Shane made the motion, so I can't change the motion. But I'd like to see the mayor and President of Council with the legal, as yourself, Tom, on an hourly, whatever basis it is, to be able to make changes as soon as possible.
That's why I wanted to go under an emergency. I don't want to make a change in a policy and a procedure myself without the council's approval. I would rather see this go under the declaration of state emergency and that we make this an emergency, we go under an emergency proclamation so that when we do something like this and if there's a change, we're under an emergency proclamation that we're able to change this, then I'll say, you get, we, this came forward, and this is in place, and we can change it. And then we can bring it back to council and say, we had to change it because the state did this. And the state did that, and now we got to change it.
Yeah, I think we're going to kind of wait for.
Right, that's what, that's, that's why I wanted to go under an emergency proclamation so that if the state changes something and says now that, you know, they're going to be able to get paid for this or now this, this is here, now they can come back after this or whatever. Everything we discussed, we can change this, this here because it's under an emergency.
Can I, can I speak to that a second here? So under the code of section 509.08 allows the mayor to declare an emergency under certain circumstances. And I think this certainly constitutes one of those circumstances. The code section is specific as to what that declaration allows the mayor to do, and those are enumerated in the 11 paragraphs. And most of that has to do with limiting firearms and creating curfew and limiting the sale of beer and wine and that sort of thing. I don't think that that section would, would authorize the mayor or the administration to change otherwise existing city laws. But having said that, I don't think that you are, or the city is precluded from obeying state mandates that would trump city regulations. And I also don't think that, I mean, there are certain things that the city, that the administration can do in terms of running the city, that it can alter a course without having to have legislation or change in the statutes. I mean, it just depends.
Yeah, I think it's just the 11 down.
So I guess what I'm saying is I don't think 509.08 gives the mayor the authority to override particular statutes, city statutes or ordinances by virtue of declaring the proclamation. The mayor can do all those things listed in sections one through 11, but to just generally override statutes and ordinances, I don't think it would, it would include that. At least that's my reading.
Can you do 509.811 subsection B, C, D, E and F? Which are, I mean, those are the ones that would be subsection B and C?
I don't know if you want to do 11 right now.
Yeah, not 11. Subsection, yeah, not 11.
We're going to need that.
Oh, geez.
Determines that emergency exists and so forth. I mean, I mean, the, the part that I want there is what we need to be able to get to this, to where we can make those changes so that we can follow this.
B and C are procedural. So if you decide to declare an emergency, I think we'd have to have something in writing and disseminate that to the, to the, to the city via media and other channels.
Here, here's where I'm at. Let's, let's, let's run with this, okay? If the state comes in with tighter regulations than what is not reflected here, we live by state rule until we have time to gather together and then amend our orders. I mean, that, like you're saying, we can live by the state law until we catch up. So I think we're good here. Really, when you look at this policy and procedure, Mayor, I don't see there are many opportunities for change. So I don't think there's going to be an emergent situation where we need to gather together and adjust this. And, and if the state tightens things down to maybe 21 days before you come to work, okay, we live by the state rule. When we have an opportunity to get together, then we adjust our policy and procedure, right?
Well, the only thing we're seeing an issue with, and this is just an issue that came forward, is if you have, okay, the way we have it is for the protection of our employees. And then we really can't stop employees from just calling in and, or taking off and going for, you know, now we were without employees to work because we're mandating them to stay out for 14 days. So now we don't have employees to work. But this is our own policy and procedure we're putting in place. Whereas if we put just this itty-bitty section here, we can tell them, you know, we need people to work. We need to still function. So, but I don't know if that would happen or not. That is just brought forward, put under the supervisory roles of these partners.
Do we have a lot of people asking for vacation?
Well, we got five that are coming back right now because.
Like, a lot of them right now in the next couple of months or not?
Right now, a lot of them are gone because it was the original spring break.
Right. And we had how many that didn't go?
We had two that didn't go from our.
Three, three. We had three that didn't go. Four. We have a chief that didn't go either.
I'm going to throw this out, which I couldn't afford to do, but what someone says, one of your employees goes to Vegas for the weekend.
That's all we're worried about, is abusing, abusing the policy. Which we can discourage travel, but we can't.
We can't stop.
Because basically, you're getting your five days, and all of a sudden, you're getting two weeks after that.
If I may, the one, one thing where this emergency really, if the mayor were to declare it to help the police department is, is because we are a union contract, we, we can only really override that in an emergency declaration. And that would be incidents like limiting their travel or anything like that, or sending days off. I've already lost two employees probably for the next 14 days. I can't afford too many more. I mean, I understand, you know, if people are sick, they're sick. But to, to allow myself to, to enforce that rule so that we aren't losing people for 14-day quarantines, I really can't do it without the emergency proclamation.
And I think the first responders are moved to the front of the list for testing as well. So if there's a question, we can get those first responders that test quicker than the lazy citizens and get them back to work before the 14 days as well, so.
And I agree with that, as long as they allow the testing to those who are not showing signs. I mean, because from what I'm understanding, you have to show signs of the illness to get tested and then eventually those who, to get back to work. Right now, the protocol is those who are showing signs that they may be sick, they can get tested, correct, Rick?
Yeah, that's the matrix currently, but they've, we've been told that'll change as those tests become more available. And the results of those tests, as the scientists inform the CDC and our local health department, exactly what it all means because they're all still going.
The priority, I think, is.
The testing and the results, we can't get hung up on because it's fluid. And we need to just rely on our Department of Health at the state level to make that decision for us.
Can you force a test?
I have no idea.
That's the next, the one that you get into is if you take your 14 days.
Or, right now you do, right now you do, have to have a doctor's order. But they want to open it up to where like Walmarts are going to have a drive-up in their parking lot and these CVS pharmacies and all. So again, that's why I don't want to get hung up on specifics in something we're trying to do. Where it's going to be changed above our control tomorrow, so.
Still, I don't know.
He may come in next or can sit and say.
I can see Harold's concerned, like I'm, I'm wrestling with Shane. But you're concerned about being able to change marijuana too, but maybe we should just go with the.
I don't know. I just, I think we've got to follow the city or the state and the federal government declaring emergency. I think the city needs to declare emergency to keep all our city working. I mean, we got to supply water, sewage, Public Works to our citizens.
We got to, we got to continue to function. That's the biggest.
Function and keep them safe.
I don't.
How many days can we go out? And if we see this happening, can we come back in session and then go into an emergency to where we could make that action? If we start seeing it happen to where we. I mean, Sarah, do you think that's an option, that we could possibly go back?
You can always amend, you can always change.
I, I understand. The union, it's very, it's very difficult to try to do that. While we're losing quite a few, they're all taking off, going 122 miles out, you know. And I'm not picking on the union employees. They may not do it. They, you know, they just, we just all got to come together and they just urge us and try to, you know, be a team here and, and, you know, we're discouraging and, you know, locking the door and trying to keep our employees healthy. I, I would hope that we would try to do that within as well.
And it's not just the city discouraging it. It's the state, it's the federal government discouraging it. There's, it's not just our, our duty to do that, but they're getting it from a lot of different angles as well.
When they're shutting down our restaurants and you can't go in and eat, and businesses are hurting and, and they're shutting down our movie theaters and they're shutting everything down, we, we just, we have to encourage.
I think keeping our employees safe outweighs that risk of people abusing them.
Because we have to function.
So, I mean, our department heads, Chief Chitlin, can you live with this? Travel policy and procedure that we're talking about today?
With the way it is today, yes, but I, I would still like to be able to change it should further things come along. If we have to, you know, shrink that from 100 miles to 50 miles to 20 miles to full county only, you know, I, I don't know where this ends.
But as of right now, as we see your death, you can live with this? Chief Slitter, I mean, are you comfortable?
Yeah, it obviously just has to be flexible to the powers above us.
We may have to revisit this as, as it goes on. And it may not be this. It may, you know, maybe people may need to. And it may not be this, it may, you know, maybe people may accept, you just don't...
So, you know, you probably run into trouble if you got to transfer to Columbus, huh?
Well, we've taken care of that. We've adjusted our situation on that issue, and we've restricted our, we're only doing transfers for Fulton County Health Center right now, and we're only limiting that. And honestly, with the hospital situation, a lot of places aren't taking patients. We've adjusted to meet for that, yeah. Plus, as a work-related matter, I would get into the specifics of, you know, what we can do, but we've adjusted our policy accordingly to prevent as much travel as we can.
And exposure, too.
What's that?
And exposure.
Right. And I, you know, we still got to take care of what we have to take care of, but because of the hospital systems of where it is, they're limiting the amount of people they're even sending to other hospitals. And a lot of that was the emergency declaration from the president, and they come out and change the Medicare and Medicaid rules. A lot of that, a lot of the reason we transport people is because of Medicaid rules and the people they can treat out here. Well, now they've said you have to keep these people and treat them because we can't take them at these other hospitals, so that's a reason that those are just changes we made based on the circumstances.
So Shane, your motion's on the floor.
Yeah, hopefully Trudy still has track of everything, right?
Lane and wait, I know.
Shane did.
Shane made the motion.
So we need a second, I'll second.
I understand. Moves on discussion.
Yeah, so Counsel, Chamberlain, I wish I was Counsel President.
Oh, thank you. That's all right, no worries.
Counsel...
Give it up, Trudy.
Basically, second to accept the policy and procedure. Counsel, Counsel Steerds?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Scott Steerds?
You don't want to interrupt there.
Six O's, six A's, no A's, motion carries.
So, to follow up on that, I sense that there's no objection to, I don't know that it needs counsel's approval for the mayor to declare an emergency proclamation, which we can put that together tomorrow and have her sign it and have it distributed, which would basically refer to the situation and indicate that pursuant to 509.08, the mayor's issuing an emergency proclamation. That's basically all I would have to say, I think.
I don't think that's what they wanted to do, though, right? No, they didn't want to do the proclamation, or did you want to do the proclamation?
Well, right now, we just tackled the travel policy and procedure. We'd be open to having a conversation about the emergency proclamation, but I don't think that the administration is ready because there's a whole lot of choices you can make there, 1 through 11, and I don't think you want to enact all 11 of them.
No.
Well, I don't think...
I think what we need to do is to be able to make an emergency proclamation pertaining to the COVID-19 executive order.
Or does 509.8 just give her the authority to do those things, kind of?
Yeah.
I guess my read of that was that you could either have in the proclamation implementing any of those or issue a state of emergency with the subsequent ability...
To do those.
To do those things.
I see that, yeah.
And so that's what I was envisioning, and again, I just, you guys don't want to do this, fine, but you could, the mayor could issue the proclamation without, I mean, none of these things, I think, is really relevant at this point to what's happening. I mean, you can see most of it has to do with the use of firearms and flappables and all that sort of thing.
If you're not reading as 509.8 institute those things, rather it gives the mayor the option of instituting those things, I'm okay with that, yeah. Also, we need to change that merit because obviously it flies in the face of our current situation, it refers to you as a "he." We need to change those to "she's" in there. I don't know what's going on with that.
Are you sure there's a gender definition somewhere?
I'm not too concerned about, I'm not too concerned about that right now.
When was this written?
I think the biggest thing is, I think what we were going on was subsection B and C under 11, but in emergency proclamation in courts with position provisions of this section shall terminate and also the powers conferred by this section. I think, yes, we were talking about other things, but I don't think we got the beginning either.
As one member of council mayor, I think 509.8 applies. I think I would be okay with my mayor of the city that I live in declaring an emergency and acting under 509.08.
My, my, why do we have to go farther than the states are already going?
Well, it allows me to file an emergency to where if we need to make changes, that we don't have to go through the procedure of coming back and voting on this stuff that Harold was concerned about. Oh, I just wish you could make it pertaining to this stuff, so that way it would be very much understood that it was pertaining to these procedures.
Scott, 509.08 gives the mayor some flexibility going forward, so it doesn't say that we're going to do anything different than the state or the federal government, it just gives her some authorities that she doesn't normally have.
Right. Especially pertaining to, especially like what was brought forward with hours and the workforce.
And I wouldn't want to rush the administration either, so, I mean, Tom and mayor get together, put together a proclamation and present it tomorrow to the public.
And if we need to prohibit the sale of beer, wine, or anything, at some point...
You're on your own.
We'll get the council president to...
But, and just, okay, far-reaching here with this. The big problem they've had in any other country with this situation right now is hospital availability and care. You have the hospital in our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Should civil disturbance, should anything happen out there that requires emergency action, this is already, the mayor's already signed and sealed on it, it's a done deal. If not, I don't foresee anybody doing anything different to what we do now. I mean, it's all there and cared for.
I already said on the EMA board, I'm already board director for that, the EMS board, so the biggest thing is when you guys come and you say, okay, we, I'm out of this, or I need to do this, and we're out of employees, and I need to do this, and it's like, well, do we wait and give 24-hour notice and call in council and make this decision, or do we make this administrative decision according to this emergency situation? Because that's what we're in, we're in a state of emergency, and that's all I'm asking.
Well, I think you do that, but to make sure we all get filled in on it.
Oh, good to see, yes. That's a given. I think, I think that would be, it would go through Tom and Shane.
Right.
And then you would be made aware of the situation.
So, Tom, what emergency do we need to say it is? Do we need to make a motion?
Well, it's a proclamation by the mayor, it's not an act by council. And the mayor could, in issuing the proclamation, invoke any of those 11 things. I think what we're talking about is not doing that, but just having a general state of declaration of emergency with the ability, should those things be helpful or necessary to the cause, she could implement them. I don't think it gives a, I don't believe it gives a broad override power to other laws that are in place.
Right, right.
Right? Only with respect, I mean, it's sort of, you know, maybe someday we want to think about this, like I said, a lot of this stuff doesn't really apply to our current situation, and maybe there'll be other things that we want the mayor to be able to do in a time of a medical emergency like this. I mean, this thing seems to be thinking about some sort of, I don't know, chaotic rebellion or something.
It's the first...
This thing changes in every five years, so situation does. And I agree with the mayor, you don't want to bring everybody back together quickly even, because it's not going to be quickly, to change this. I mean, if Chief Sluter or Chittin comes and says, this is what come down, we need a decision, the mayor needs to make that decision.
And I think that's, I think that's appropriate, but if it happens to be something that's inconsistent with a city ordinance or a law, I think you make the, you make the call, do we do that before we get that changed by council? And I think, you know, you kind of got to wait, I mean, you probably have to do that. But I still think you've got to go back and go through the proper channels to, you know, to address that.
If it's not, I mean, an emergency to me is pertaining to the health, safety, and welfare.
Yeah.
And it's not about, you know, and to me, if we don't have enough people on our streets to protect our public, then that is part of it. And that's something to where we need to tweak this procedure to where we now go down to 50 or whatever, that's when Colin say, we're going to have to do this, and then he will allow you guys to know that we had to do this because of that.
So if we're under a city of emergency situation, is our employees going to be able to travel, or are we going to restrict all travel?
That's the question.
Well, you can't restrict them from travel.
You can't restrict.
As far as vacations, the department heads got approval of vacation, and I don't think the average person's going to fly to Las Vegas for a two-day weekend.
Right, we already got flights, right?
Right, but they, I'm sure they were planning, so.
Well, that's why are we going to restrict them?
On or are we going to just, what are we going to do?
Well, I think, like I said, the department heads, somebody comes, Chief Kevin says, hey, I want off next week. He can say, hey, you know, there's no way we can do this.
Under an emergency, if we don't have enough employees...
You're going to have to wait, so. It's, I mean, I think they're going to, they're going to know that they can't let their people go on vacation.
First check their...
Sarah, you, we did talk about this, that if they wanted to go on vacation, if you don't have enough, under an emergency, when...
If they want to go vacation, and it doesn't, not in this emergency situation, it conflicts the schedule.
Or you want to take a sick day off, or, yeah, or you went 122 miles out and you came back in, there's just certain rules when you're under contract that he has to follow where Keith doesn't. You know, Keith can say, hey, I need you to come into work, whatever, you know, I need so many men, we just got ten inches, no, there's just difference that he has to follow that, under an emergency, those are all...
Right, but under, that cover and changes it to where he can say, no, you can't take vacation next week, so.
The union contract does have a place in it for emergency?
Yes.
So you can say, sorry, can't go because we've declared an emergency?
Right.
Is that true for you, too, also?
Well, I don't have any contract.
Oh, you don't have one yet? Oh, I thought they did. I'm sorry. Okay.
They got, you should have got the contract. They're working on that part.
Yeah.
No, they please clarify some of the...
No, I mean, I don't, no, the process is in, we don't have any agreement yet, so.
All right.
So what else do we need, Mayor?
Well, we need, we have, Scott had to exit, he will be coming back in.
Yes.
Wait for him, or you want to talk about the issue of future council meetings and how you can handle it?
Would you like to explain what you heard?
Sure, I'll take care of this. I think this has been great dialogue, and I think as a council, we can show the support for the administration, and I would like to do that by submitting a motion that city council supports the mayor's consideration and authoring a proclamation of emergency under 509.08. So this is simply a motion the city council can author, showing our support for the mayor in considering declaring an emergency within the city of Oaxaca. I'd make that motion, Trudy.
Okay.
I'll say it.
I'm sorry. Council President Chamberlain made the motion of, I'm sort of trying to second him, to support the mayor with this section, 509.8. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just glad I'm not the mayor, because you get to this point, you just put a no return. Something's going wrong.
I know. Believe me, my phone has not stopped ringing. Right, the vote, Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Jeff Steerds?
Yes.
Counsel Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel Scott Steerds?
Yes.
Six A's, no A's, motion carries. Thank you for great discussion, Council President.
So, one question that's arisen is the, whether council should just continue a meeting temporarily, given the crisis, or if it should continue meeting but close the meeting off to the public so as to avoid problems of the virus being spread?
I didn't think we could do that.
Do what?
Closing.
Well, that's, so, under the Open Meetings Act, you can't, you have to make sure the meeting is open to the public. And the statute and the 2009 Attorney General opinion seem to suggest, one would argue pretty clearly, that states of emergency don't trump the open meeting requirement. But Friday, Attorney General Yost issued an informal letter in which he indicated that reading those particular provisions in connection with the state of emergency, declaration of emergency, I think, promulgated by the health official, I forget her name, Anton? Can't remember.
Ashton.
What's that?
I think it's Ashton.
Ashton, okay.
All right.
Reading that declaration alongside those two legal pieces would suggest that it would be legally permissible for a council to our public subdivision, whatever, subject to the Open Meetings Act, to comply with that law by live-streaming its meetings. He also indicated that it would be permissible to, for a member of the body to appear telephonically as long as that person could be heard, and the folks viewing could also hear that person if that person was engaged in the discussion. There was, actually, Attorney General Yost held a open meeting conference call this afternoon at 4:30 for any law directors or solicitors interested in participating, and many people raised the question of whether his opinion will give them sufficient protection if they were to implement that, and then someone were to challenge whether or not the Open Meeting Act was compliant with his, and they were looking for a formal Attorney General opinion, and his response was that he didn't really, in so many words, he didn't really want to issue a formal opinion for fear that that opinion would subsequently be used in other circumstances in the future for closing off meetings, you could, you know, call anything an emergency kind of thing. And so, the long and the short of it is, he said that he would be willing to, if any city or village got, was a party to a lawsuit after the fact, that the Attorney General's office would be more than happy to weigh in with the amicus curi and defend, join as a defendant and help represent the institution. There was, the last thing I'll say about that conference call, there was a request by the head of the municipal league to the Attorney General, asking him if he would consider talking to the governor and ask the governor to issue a proclamation or some sort of ruling based on his ability to do so on a state of emergency, indicating that that kind of means of facilitating the Open Meetings Act requirement would be sufficient. So he is, the way it was left, I think he was going to reach out to the governor and see if that would be possible. The long story short is, I don't think, my own view is it just very little exposure if a council were to decide to close the meeting to the public, but live-stream it, if that's technically impossible for us to do. Those, I just wanted, just wanted to let you all know, that's sort of the turf. You can't cut, you can't just close the doors and tell people they can't come to a meeting and hold the meeting, but you could close the doors and live-stream it if that was something that could be done.
Everybody just take your temperature before you come to the meeting.
If I'm not mistaken, we've had our two meetings in March, and so the next meeting would not be until April 6.
Three weeks.
Maybe by then, a lot of things will be resolved, too.
Are we obligated to two meetings a month? Or do we, can we go to one?
We can go to one, because we did.
Yeah, we did.
So we could not have the first meeting in April?
You could cancel the meeting, sure.
And then have one the third, and that would give us some time.
Just, I'm on a list serve for the municipal league and just hearing from a lot of the other municipalities, and I know Brian apparently canceled their meetings, but it seems like for the most part, it's business as usual in terms of continuing to hold meetings, and they're just trying to figure out how to do that.
Yeah.
But certainly, that's an option, you can cancel. But certainly that's an option, you can cancel, you can cancel the meeting. I wouldn't think so.
Because we've got three weeks until this meeting and a lot could transpire.
Sure.
We would just need to let the public know before.
We're sitting this hard. Two weeks' time.
We've got three weeks and two. We know where the curve is on this virus. It's up to you guys.
I don't know what the status is of committee meetings.
Council makes the decision on, on the council meetings, so.
Well, I just don't know if there was a lot of meetings that were, that need to be scheduled for which this issue, because you'd have to leave it open to the public as well.
No committee meetings are scheduled right now.
I scheduled planning commission for next Monday, does that? Because there's going to be a zoning change. We have a Matt and Monts, should I cancel it, or what?
I think that would be a discussion for the, the chair of that committee, but just so they know that, that they can't close the meeting off to the public, obviously, if they decide to hold it. Unless, I mean, I suppose council could, if it didn't want that to move forward, could. Could activate that.
Is it pending a sale?
No, they haven't purchased it.
Okay.
So maybe they got to have it so they can build or something.
No, they are, it's, it's for a church.
Oh, okay.
They already bought it, so then there's only change to vote in for councils. Serious evidence on that church, yeah.
Right.
It's a, I mean, where we're at, I mean, schools don't get back until mid-April. I'm, I'm comfortable with canceling the April 6 council meeting. And going to the second one in April, just as a sign of times, folks, I mean, that's where we're at.
We're shutting our front doors and we're locking our front doors, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to. I'd make a motion to.
I'd be better.
I'd make a motion to cancel the committee, the whole schedule for April 2 and council meeting scheduled for April 6.
That's if you notify us about 11 before you do it. So you notify us about 11, number 11, before you do it?
Scott is worried about you if you have number 11.
That's the only way you can get through the next phase.
If we get through St. Patrick's.
Just, well. Council President Chamberlain made the motion with Councilor Steerds seconding to cancel the April 2 council meeting and April 6 council meeting. Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Jeff Steerds?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
And Council Scott Steerds?
Yes.
Six A's, no A's, motion carries. Good. I have so much material up here, I've lost my agenda.
Livestreaming on council.
Do we have any more discussion on your new business?
I got, I got one thing here.
Yes.
The veterans in America.
Yes.
Came.
Yes.
And we thought we would do this at council, the whole, however, that's been canceled. This is what the plaques are going to look like.
That's amazing.
For everybody that wasn't here.
Seen those in some other cities.
This, we can, we can contact the vets and the legion, tell them that it's going to postpone until later in April to May, okay? I just wanted everybody to see what they'll look like, okay?
Do you have to take that to committee yet, or have you guys given them the okay to go ahead with that?
We brought it to the committee, building the grounds, and the buildings and grounds approved this and motioned. But it's going to come to council, but that's going to come in the second week in April or the second council meeting in April. And council as a whole, unless we postpone, that's when it's going to come, okay? And Trudy, you take care of this from there.
Okay. I love that picture, I had her preschool.
Did you really?
Elizabeth, yes.
I just wanted to point that out to you.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to pay the bills?
I'd make that motion.
Hall and Payton?
Hi.
Sure, Trudy.
Okay. She's, she's over, she's getting a little hangry there.
I am.
Okay. A motion to adjourn, please. Appreciate it, everybody.
We got a second, Harold?
They will.
All right, it's an auction.
Okay, now we're on paper. Hall and Payton?
Hi.
Thank you, council, for helping me out, thank you.
Three quarters.